Per the Madison Public Schools Bylaw 9410, the Board Organizational Meeting is the next regularly scheduled meeting following the election in November and shall be the organizational meeting of the Board. A temporary chairperson shall be chosen by a majority of those members present and shall preside until a successor is elected. So for new Board members, this is the only time you'll ever see me open up a Board of Education. So welcome Diane and welcome Kathy. This is a very unique meeting because we actually have to elect our Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary. So at this time, I will hand it over because I will call for a nomination for a temporary Board Chair. Any nominations?
I move Katie Stein for temporary Board Chair.
Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Katie Stein is the temporary Board Chair.
Take us back, thank you very much. My second order of business is to call for nominations for Board Chair.
The petrification being repetitive, I'm going to move Katie Stein as the Chair of Board of Education.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, well, thank you. I just want to quickly say, and I'll keep it quick and short, that I'm really honored and humbled by your trust in selecting me for this role. I want everybody to know I don't take it lightly. I plan to work really hard and I look forward to working with all of you for the district, for the families, and the kids that we all are working to represent. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. So moving on, I would like to call for nominations for the Board's Vice Chair.
I would like to nominate Kirk Barnaby as Vice Chair of the Board.
All in favor?
Well, we need a second.
Okay, sorry.
No one has agreed yet.
Okay, sorry.
A second.
Second Violet, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Your first order is new chair.
I messed up. Or you can have it up. Obsteem motion carries. Herter?
Thank you.
And now I'd like to call for the nomination for Board Secretary.
I would like to nominate Emily for the Board Secretary.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Obsteem motion carries. And our last order of business is our capital improvement program.
You can do that on number six.
Oh, that's for later? Number one?
Yeah.
Okay.
To be continued.
So we'll move on to number three, which is our welcome to our new Board members. Kathy Miller, and I'm going to mess up her name, so please correct me. Diane?
Infinetines.
Infinetines. Welcome to both of you. I'm so happy election season is behind us and we can now really get back to work on the things that really, really matter. So, we appreciate you stepping up to serve in the district and I look forward to working with you. It's going to be fun. Anne, sorry, go ahead. Everybody knows I love presents, so our new Board members, get a present. Welcome. It's not a cowbell.
I already have a few of those.
Welcome aboard, and we have an orientation for Board members, so you'll get invited. I think you probably got an email ready. If you didn't get your Madison email, it should be set up right. So we'll come to Central Office when, at your convenience, and we'll get a chance to meet Central Office administrators and look at the whole system and so forth. Welcome aboard.
Yeah, and I encourage you to take advantage of as much of it as you can. I know how busy everybody is, but getting really to meet the Central Office staff is really, it'll really help in getting you acclimated to the role. And all of us are happy that you're here and you can feel free to reach out to any of us at any time if you have any questions. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so, public participation. The Board welcomes public comment at our meetings. When speaking, please state your name and address. Comments are limited to three minutes in order to ensure that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak. Please speak on one topic per public comment session. Please allow everyone who would like to speak an opportunity before attempting to speak a second time. Please do not identify individual staff members or students by name for critical comment. The Board's happy to hear from our community, but it should not be expected that the Board will respond. The Superintendent may respond, then we request that the individual submit the question in writing or invite the individual to meet outside the Board meeting. Thank you. So any member of the public who would like to speak? I know. Okay, so, we have a couple of recognitions tonight.
We do, and we're going to have to go a little bit off-script for a couple of reasons. The first recognition is for Rebecca Corte, who is just finishing on November 29th her tenure as Assistant Principal at Paulson, the prior almost seven years, Assistant Principal at Brown Middle School. Rebecca has been appointed the new principal of Canton Intermediate School, grades three through five. We're very excited, it's very bittersweet for us. She does incredible work, she's an incredible professional, we're going to miss her a great deal. She could not be here tonight because she has three little ones and she had childcare issues, so she was very disappointed that I got a message about 5:00. So, we can get her flowers and I'll make a house visit tomorrow over to Paulson to go see her and send regards on behalf of the Board. It's a big loss, it's a really big loss. She is a tremendous person and professional. We do have a search that will begin as we transition, and as a part of that process, Board members, a Board member is a part of each round of interviews, we have two rounds of interviews, and we had hoped to, by the holidays, have this wrapped up so that after the holidays, we can have a new person transition to the Assistant Principal role at Paulson.
So you need two Board members. So, if anybody's interested in volunteering for the interview, let me know.
So we have some dates and times, I think, already identified. We do a screening process and then two rounds, so we can get those dates. Wendy, can you make sure that we send Katie the dates?
Thank you.
Thanks, and Catherine has those. The next one off-script, I got a message at about 6:45, and Mr. Salutary is running a little late. His daughter Brooke is on the varsity girls soccer team, which won in a double overtime, double shootout match at Massing, which is over an hour away, I believe. So, he described his travels back here as being on two wheels, and he doesn't drive a motorcycle as far as I know, so that could be quite dangerous, but he's getting here as soon as he can, and if you don't mind sitting tight and enjoying the Board of Education interview. But if I can ask for the Board, as soon as he comes, if we can just pivot into that recognition of our two students who are here tonight for the Association of Public School Superintendent's Student Leadership Award. Well, still a thunder and dad, we'll talk about that in a little bit.
I'd like to make a motion, I think in this case, to postpone that agenda item until the principals arrive.
Thank you, Colonel Terry.
We need a second.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
There you go.
You got that, my dear? Thank you.
Eric's here.
Eric's here, so super, he's got a lot to report. Our student report.
I'll go in chronological order. So, first was, two weekends ago, there was a robotics competition statewide held at Daniel Hand High School, and our Daniel Hand team won the entire tournament and Excellence Award, and that's the first time that Daniel Hand has won a competition since 2014. So, we have turned a new corner for the robotics program.
You know something about that competition, right?
What?
You know something about that competition, right?
Yeah.
Because you're on the robotics team.
Come on, you're a little bit, you're on the team.
Congratulations.
Very nice.
Then the last weekend, we took the PACT. There was also currently the CIAC playoffs, like you said, with the Soccer Gate. The Veterans Day Assembly happened yesterday, and it was very nice of how the veterans gave back to the football team by buying them all hand warmers, and they presented them with a small gift.
I heard that.
And also the Fall Play is starting next Thursday at 7:00, also on Friday and Saturday at 7:00.
What's the play?
Canterbury Tales. And that is all.
Eric, can you explain a little bit about the robotics competition, your role, and what the team had to do to achieve that?
So, it's an all-day competition, I'm the president of the whole, like, team program, the club, and we have to go through a qualifying round of six matches, which are about three intensive minutes long, and then we go, we become ranked out of everyone there, and then the top 16 people. We ranked number eight because we lost two matches. We partnered with the number four team because you have to create an alliance, and then you compete through a round of 16, all the way to the final match, and that qualifies you to go to New England Regionals, which in the past two competitions, we have qualified three times.
Great. When is that?
That is in March, mid-March.
And the team advisor is Mr. Amenta.
Yes, Mr. Amenta is the advisor.
Very committed, and has been doing this for a number of years. He came to visit after school one day, and it's quite an active environment, I will say. A lot of buzzing and beeping and movement in the club after school and practice, that's great. Great, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congrats, thank you. Now we're at number six, so going back. I am, the capital improvement program also needs two Board of Education representatives. For new Board members who are not familiar, the Capital Improvement Program Committee is comprised of two representatives from each of the three major boards and town board, the Finance Board, Selectman, and Board of Education, and we talk about major capital expenses. Am I getting that right, Stacy?
Yep.
And so, we need to nominate two people for that committee.
I would like to nominate Katie Stein and Kirk Barnaby.
Thank you, and Kirk, I think, is perfectly suited, being on the board, on the Finance Committee, too, and so I think that'll be really helpful, so. All in favor? A second?
A second.
Okay, need a second, thank you, Violet. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obsteem motion carries. Okay, thank you. Superintendent's report. Good.
We're going to go a little out of order because we do have a student presentation, so we're going to go with 7.2 to start. Mr. Glasser's here, it's okay, if we can dive right in.
Absolutely.
We have a civics action plan, so rather than steal any thunder, if you want to come up to the seats right here.
Hot seat.
Yeah, okay.
I should briefly introduce Anna Steffen, who's a junior, and she's going to talk more than I am.
So we present, and for Board members, maybe a bit redundant, but for Kathy and Diane, international field trips are something that we have brought back in, a great deal of help from Mr. Glasser, brought back to the district five, six years ago now, and some of the experiences have just been life-changing for kids who've been a part of it. We've been to Europe, Costa Rica, literally all over the world, groups of students. Mr. Glasser's shepherd a lot of those trips, and we have a special treat because the presentation is not unique, Martin's been there before, but to have a student do the presentation as a part of your junior class civics class, correct?
Yes.
Part of the action plan, so, okay. So on that note, they have your attention.
Okay, so, I, last year, had Mr. Glasser for Modern Middle East, which is a history elective that you can take at school, and so he also noticed that I was taking World Traveler, which is another history elective you can take, where you learn about, like, world traveling and how to plan trips, and so then we, like, talked about it, and then he asked if I would help him plan this trip for Greece, which would be spring 2021. So, this fall, I was signed up for civics, and we have to do a civic action plan where you either choose something that you want to better in your community, or you give a gift to the community. So I got permission from my teacher, Mrs. Mastriani, to use this Greece trip as my civic action plan. So, throughout this fall, I researched places in Greece to go, and I actually formed an itinerary that we then submitted to the travel company, and they sent us a, like, price and finalized itinerary, so I actually have a copy for everyone of the plans. And it's on, like, the...
Let you do it.
We'll take a minute off. Are you sure?
Let you do all of the issues.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. So, the trip will begin in Athens, and we will specifically be visiting Mykrosos,
and we want to make sure that everyone gets this exact view of Mykrosos from Athens, because we feel that this is something necessary, that needs to be seen as an important part of the history of Greece. So then, after we travel to Athens, we will then be visiting the coastal town of Napleio, but we have included two stops along the way. So the first stop that we will be taking is in Corinth, which is one of Greece's ancient cities. In Corinth, we will be seeing the ancient site, museums, ruins, and also the fortress at Acrocorinth, which you can see on the left on that mountain. Our second stop will be a guided tour of Mycenae, an archaeological site. It is the largest and most important center of the Mycenaean civilization, the culture that dominated mainland Greece in the 8th century B.C. So from there, we will spend two days in Napleio. So he will, here will be getting a guided tour of Epidurus, the famous acoustically perfect amphitheater in ancient Greece. In Napleio, we will also be visiting the Palomibi Castle, which was built by the Venetians in 1711 through 1714, and we're going to climb it and get views of the whole city. So then we'll be traveling to Demetzana, and here we will be hiking the Leosis Gorge. This site offers ancient Arcadian ruins and the ability to see cliff-top monasteries that overlook the gorge. So then we will be visiting Calabrita, but on the way, we will be, take a boat ride through the cave of the lakes, which are unique natural caves that have cascading lakes flowing through. So then we will be visiting Calabrita, which is the next town that we'll be staying in. So here, we will be taking a ride on the COG train, which is a railway service that covers 22-kilometer route from Calabrita to Diakoto. Another site that we will be visiting is the Castle of Arius, which is a medieval castle located on the side of a rocky mountain that we will hike up. Perhaps most important, we will be visiting the Holocaust Memorial and Museum located in the village. The Holocaust Monument is on the hill right above the town. So during World War II, the Germans occupied Greece, and one of the villagers in Calabrita shot a Nazi officer. As a reprisal, Nazis ordered every male in the village over the age of 15 to come to the town square, where they were subsequently massacred. So then, we will be visiting Delphi, but we will be taking two stops along the way. So the first will be in Nafpaktos, where we will walk through the historic town, visit the Castle of Nafpaktos, and walk around the Venetian harbor. Our second stop will be at Galaxidi, where we will visit the Galaxidi National Nautical Museum, which provides the history of the village and of their roots as a fishing town. So then we will be visiting Delphi, and here we will take a tour of the ancient archaeological site, which will give a history of the area and offers views of the mountains. This was the most important religious site of ancient Greece, as the people consulted the oracle and spiritual setting. Our, the final landmark will be to visit the Hosiocluus Monastery. It is one of the most important monuments of Middle Byzantine architecture and art, and has been one of UNESCO's World Heritage Sites due to its beautifully preserved mosaics. So, this trip incorporates different phases of ancient Greece, Byzantine Greece, and the Middle Ages, and the early modern era. We think this is educationally and culturally sound, and hope you view favorably upon this request.
Only if you would take us along.
Right. Great presentation. Do you have any questions? Yes.
That was well done.
Thank you.
So I do have a question on your trip dates.
Yes.
Is that flexible, because we are just in the process of...
I asked the same question.
Yes, so we know that there wasn't a set April break yet, so we have, like, any time in April is available, like, we don't, it's not necessarily...
It's the 2nd to the 16th, that's fine. I just have to give the tour company a day.
Sure. So, as long as you understand the calendar hasn't been set.
Yeah, yeah, we know that. We hope to adopt it in the next month.
Okay.
And I found George Shepherd.
Are there, I always ask this, are there scholarships available if students would like to attend?
I have to answer this one. I wouldn't, I frankly don't know how to go about that, you know? If you have a suggestion, I'd be, I'd like to hear it, but I wouldn't even know how to fundraise for it, it's kind of, it's hard enough to get the, you know, it's costly, as you know, just to get the understanding of what it is for their kids is challenging.
And these all fill up, right? But, I don't remember...
Some, well, actually, ironically, this year's didn't quite fill up. I know that's ironic, but this year we had a tough time, it's, if you remember going to Poland, a little to Czech Republic, and Vienna, and other parts of Austria, I thought it was kind of a cool trip, but we anticipate, due to grand swell of early indications...
Yeah, we've had a lot of people say that they want...
This probably will fill up. I've done Greece before, it's a great place to go, and it's, everything about it is wonderful to travel, it's safe, it's beautiful, the people are wonderful, the weather's great.
Will there be some fundraising, you think, or what are...
It's usually individuals, I'm...
Yeah, in the past, it's been individual.
Nice job.
You may have said this, but which classes, are there certain classes that you would kind of market this to?
Well, a lot of people actually did take World Traveler last year, which I think was like a newer course, and so, I think a lot of people who took that would, like, be interested in doing this, just seeing as they have, like, had experience in planning trips and learning about other places.
Great, great presentation. Thank you. And so the Board will take action on this event.
You will.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Great.
The next Board meeting, just so you know, the next Board meeting is December 3rd, it'll be on that agenda, December 3rd.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sure, thank you.
Appreciate your time.
So now, do you want to do someone?
I could, you know what, I think Program Studies needs Mr. Salutary here. He didn't get pulled over. If he didn't get pulled over.
I can start, if you want to start, it's up to you.
I think, is the budget calendar kind of simple, if we can do that? Stacy, you want to do the budget calendar?
Sure, I can do a copy.
Oh, you did, didn't you?
It's in color. Yes. Just for him. Yes, exactly, just for Tom.
So there were some changes to the budget calendar, and I'll defer to Kirk for some comments from the Finance Committee on the changes to the calendar.
Sure, thanks, Tom. As we discussed last time, there are a number of folks on the Board who felt that we'd like to have the budget discussions take place at a full Board level, rather than having the information filtered through the Finance Committee, and so, this calendar reflects that, and what we have done, we have eliminated the formal adoption of any budget assumptions. We want to have the, what are referred to as budget assumptions and their associated costs presented at an initial budget workshop, along with the costs of the budget in its entirety, and so we're proposing that that first budget workshop take place on the 10th of December. We have eliminated Finance Committee meetings prior to the 10th of December. We do have one scheduled for the 17th, if, following the budget workshop on the 10th, at which the full budget will be discussed, including what are referred to as a budget assumptions, if we receive a mandate from the full Board to take action on some specific aspect. And then, we have additional budget workshops, which were already scheduled, but now there'll be Workshops 2 and 3, if necessary, that would take place on December the 17th, and then January the 7th, with the deadline for taking action on the budget still scheduled for January the 21st.
And Stacy, we typically have the budget, the bound, nicely bound book over the Christmas Vacation?
Correct.
To the Board, is that, will that be moved up as well as a part of this?
It will be.
Okay, so when could the Board expect that? Would it be the 17th?
Our plan is for the second budget workshop on December 17th.
Okay.
Stacy told me we couldn't have it by the 10th. She was very...
I hope we can have it by 17th.
17 is really early.
She was very, she was very forceful on that.
Thank you, Stacy.
I would just say, it's the first time we've moved it up disorderly, so, yeah.
We'll be patient, and we appreciate the adjustment.
Yeah.
Can I, I have a couple of questions, but first I want to weigh in that I think that this is very helpful, and I support this, and I know Kathy had been a champion of this, and I think it's a good idea as well, so I'm glad that we're moving forward, even as she's a part of the Board with this. Can I ask about the meetings on the 10th and the 17th? Is that going to be replacing some meetings? So, for example, on the 10th, that's the time of the Facilities meeting, and then on the 17th, we have a full Board, as a part of the Board?
Yeah, that's right, we have a, we have a full Board, but we're going to do it as...
A workshop.
As a workshop. Yeah, and, and, great, on the 10th, there was, that was originally scheduled as a Finance Committee meeting, but we switched it to a full-Board workshop.
I think we have Facilities to do that, you might want to just double check.
I'll check that.
You could also flip them, you could do Facilities at 5:30, keep the Finance at 6:30, or something like that, just...
We could check that.
Well, it's not, it's not the Finance, it's just going to be, it's going to be a workshop for all of us.
Right, 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 right.
But I'll check on Finance, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Hang on, we're going to, I'm sorry, Tom. Stacy?
Yes, sir.
That no has to be changed to a yes on the 10th.
That's a existing meeting, exists, and that's a no, because that is not a current meeting. That's not, we're adopting it tonight.
Oh, I see, okay, thank you. I stay corrected.
We'll have to establish...
Sure, we'll be last.
Thank you.
And to further allow Mr. Salutary to catch his breath, we are going to go up to the next item.
Here we are.
And do the budget assumptions, so he can just relax. Congratulations.
Yay!
You watch your daughter in two shootouts play goalie? Three shootouts?
Three.
Do you have any nails left?
Three rounds or shootouts?
Nail biter.
How's Mrs. Salutary's nerds right now?
It's still frozen soft.
That's right.
A little bit of fun weather, isn't it?
That's great, so you catch your breath, we'll do a couple of things, and we'll do the CAP Student Awards, and we'll do the Program Studies. Budget assumptions, going to hand these out. So for Kathy and Diane, this is a process that we've used historically, just to kind of guide before the administration develops a budget, just some important considerations that the Board will expect in the budget, as a part of the budget, based on administration's recommendations. These are not binding by any chance, by any stretch, if, and actually, the administration, when we put our, the admin team puts our budget together, sometimes we will choose not to put one in because we're mindful of the overall cost. Okay. Any questions or discussion on these? I know Kirk, you would, at our next meeting, we would put some dollar amounts with these.
For the 10th?
Yes, for the 10th, yep. For the 10th, Stacy, you're good for that, right?
Correct.
Nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed, no. All right, so for a good, we can move on.
That was great.
We're going to go back.
We're done with your...
No, 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 but we're going to go back, because these lovely families have been enduring a sort of bed meeting, and we are going to now recognize...
Yes, we're going to recognize.
...a couple of wonderful students and allow these families to go celebrate.
Yes.
So the CAP Student Leadership Award is one of my favorite awards. Every year, we get to pick through a rather rigorous process, which Salutary will articulate about that, one male and one female student from each school in the district, to recognize students with not only strong academic backgrounds, but most importantly, students who are very, very active in service and in leadership. And I say this every year, so for Board members who have heard this, they're going to hear it again, for the first time, you'll hear this. We would love to take credit for the wonderful things that this year, for Anne and I... We would love to take credit for the wonderful things that, um, this year for, for Anne and Isaiah. We can't, a lot of these things are from mom and dad. What you do to prepare your children to come here and to be leaders, and to be servants to their school community, we thank you. Academically, we hope we have taken them as far as they can go and beyond, but this award is really a testament of your families, and of the way you've raised your children, and the way you've supported your children. So it's, um, I'm trying hard, I almost have you crying, I'm close. But really, from the bottom of my heart, uh, we, we do these awards every year, and it is so touching because of the, truly, it's a family award. So thank you for sharing your wonderful kids with us, and Mr. Saitteri, you have some very specific things you'd like to share about these wonderful students.
So thank you, everyone, I apologize again for being late. Two overtimes, three rounds, penalty kicks in Monroe, so, I got here and wasn't arrested. So Annie, we're gonna go ladies first, why do you get to stand up here with me? You get to look right in the camera, you don't have to say anything. But I did write a few words, and just to talk about the actual award, you know, like Mr. Skry said, around leadership, academic performance, service to the community, we have, you know, over 280 seniors, so when we take a look at, you know, the number of students who can just be considered, it's pretty impressive. And it's a rigorous process, teachers provide input, counselors provide input, it goes to the administration, we look at lots of different things, and then two students always rise to the top, and it's a pleasure to introduce to you, so I'm not going to read about you, so you can just sit here and smile happily. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Annie Barra as one of Daniel Hand High School's recipients of the 2019-2020 Connecticut Association of Public Schools Superintendent's Award. Annie is an incredibly well-rounded and highly successful young adult. She has selected and excelled in many of the most rigorous courses offered in our program of studies. Her contributions in and out of the classroom, a conscientious work ethic, and lofty expectations have led to a high-level success in all her endeavors. Annie enjoys all academic disciplines, but has the greatest interest in the science field. Annie also enjoys math and Spanish courses, but no matter her personal preference, she is always highly engaged and an active participant in class. Teachers value Annie as an important member of our school community. Her contributions in the classroom are thought-provoking and lead to deeper discussions with her peers and her teachers. Pretty good so far? In addition to a rigorous course load, Annie is incredibly involved in numerous extracurricular activities. Some examples of her involvement include the fact that she is the editor-in-chief of our school yearbook committee, the captain of our highly successful varsity tennis team, and a competitive member of the backstage dance center. Annie has volunteered at Yale University, Yale New Haven Hospital, and Madison Youth and Family Services. As a volunteer with Madison Youth and Family Services, Annie serves as a peer advocate, participates in crisis management, and assists senior citizens with household projects. While volunteering at Yale New Haven Hospital, Annie has greeted patients, responded to questions from visitors, supported staff and patients, and cared for infants and toddlers in their daycare center. Almost there, I'm great. Annie volunteers work, volunteer work with the Aortic Institute at Yale University as a student in research is quite impressive. In this role, she has analyzed data, attended whole lectures and research team meetings, prepared visual abstracts for presentations, and anticipates the publication of the results of her research in an academic journal. Annie's drive to succeed has earned her numerous academic awards from the social studies, physical education, English, and mathematics departments at Daniel Hand. As you can imagine, she is proud of being inducted into the National Honor Society. Annie plans to pursue a liberal arts degree followed by a career in science. Annie will tell you that she know, she likes to know how people work, and plans to use this knowledge as a foundation when she enters the medical field. Annie is a young woman of integrity and flawless character. She is supportive of others, caring, mature, and responsible. Annie is selfless and has already helped improve the lives of those around her. She is looking forward to continuing on this path in a more formal role in the future. Despite all of her accomplishments, and worth noting, is the fact that Annie always remains humble and personable. She is an outstanding young adult who is clearly deserving of this special recognition, congratulations.
Now?
We'll do, does that work?
Let's do it now, you got it.
Your camera, parents come up too.
Yes.
We didn't tell you that, so you get, this will be on our website.
Source.
You get to come up here. Oh, my pleasure.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And one more.
And two more.
There you go.
Awesome.
Awesome. Is that all or less? Isaiah, ready? So is the anticipation of coming up here? Say it once so I get it right. Just to make sure I know. So, our second student, we always go ladies first, I think it's appropriate, so Isaiah gets to sit there and wait, is Isaiah McNeely. It's our other recipient of the CAPS 2019 and 2020 Connecticut Public School Superintendent Award. Isaiah is a driven young adult, fully committed to success. High academic achievement is a clear priority, as evidenced by incredible accomplishment in many of our most rigorous courses. In the classroom, Isaiah is organized and well-prepared. He is strong in mathematics and science, and finds the process of applying specific theories and formulas especially intriguing. Isaiah has strong communication skills, and is a critical thinker and reader who has developed into a natural leader in the classroom. Teachers genuinely value his contributions and view him as a role model for others. Isaiah's involvement outside of the classroom is not only comprehensive, but quite impressive. For a few examples, he has been selected by his peers to serve as captain of our incredibly successful football team and our track and field team. He has received all SEC, all area, all state, and national qualification honors as a javelin thrower. Isaiah has served as a volunteer coach for Madison Youth Football, has coordinated coaching Tiger football camp, and is a member of the high school football team's leadership council. Beyond athletics, Isaiah is the president of our Uganda Club, a member of Habitat for Humanity, a member of the Diversity Club, and a member of a special education support group. He has volunteered his time at Special Olympics for the past three years and is fully involved in our district-based special education program known as Tiger Trax. Isaiah has found the time, I'm not sure how, to develop his own lawn care service and works up to 15 hours per week. Due to his very high interest in mechanical engineering, he has been hired to repair and refurbish boat motors, and due to his skillset in this area, he has been hired by Sound Boat Works for the past two years. Isaiah is very proud of the fact that his knowledge and skills in mechanics and engineering are mostly self-taught. Isaiah's consistent efforts have earned him numerous awards in academics and athletics that include induction into the National Honor Society. He has set high standards for himself, and has done his best to ensure the degree of success he has earned. Isaiah is a remarkable young man who is determined to succeed. His energy, commitment to others, a sense of empathy, and I say a sense that is not typically seen in people his age, have afforded him the ability to improve the lives of those around him. Isaiah recognizes and embraces the positive impact that one person can have on many individuals and the community. He is an outstanding student, leader, and overall person who is clearly deserving of this special recognition, congratulations.
Congratulations. I think my zoom house is gonna.
You'll be on our website for a year.
Thank you. Congratulations, congratulations, congratulations.
All right.
I see you're in the plan. I know this mess, I work last year. She's gonna do a wake stop for me.
Congratulations.
So exciting. Wow.
I'm gonna let you catch your breath, I'll do another item, and then let you catch your breath, okay? You've had a very unique note, okay. So we did two reviews, um, again, for Cathy and Diane, we had a strategic plan that was adopted a year and a half ago. We did two reviews, and we have a recommendation to add a new strategic objective around communication for the district, which we call actively communicate and promote the value of the school district. So we have a strategy map, which includes strategic objectives, uh, which Gail will hand out in a second. And then we also have, um, an initiative around communication systems, which will be very familiar to board members who have been on the board, because it involves a lot of the work we've been doing since the summer our communication, uh, plan began. And also a measurement, uh, around Google Analytics and task completion as well, so we're gonna hand, do you want to have the whole packet, yeah?
Sure.
We're on 7-1, we're going to access 7-1 now.
Thank you.
So, in the packet, the first page is the map of the strategic objectives, so all the objectives that we have in our plan. Pages two and three are the actual scorecard themselves, which is a list from going from left to right of the objective, the measures that we have used, and the initiatives that support those measures. And then, um, after that is, it should say, no, keep going. My packet's different, okay. Yep, so the next two pages will say P10, measure detail, and then the initiative charter. So if you can look at the initiative charter, which looks like this page right here, okay? You'll see all of the communication initiatives, uh, with the start date and end date there. Every single strategic objective has an initiative charter, and has a measurement to measure our progress towards it. So you can see a lot of this work will be very familiar to board members here, and it's been part of a rather comprehensive communications campaign that began in concept probably a year or two ago, um, and then really in substance over the last year, and most, mostly since August, uh, with the addition of a communication specialist and, and our efforts there. So that would kind of round out our recommendations and continue into year two with the other objectives that are on the front page of the strategy map. We've also included for, uh, for everybody, but particularly for, for Cathy and Diane, there's an attachment that says strategic, Madison strategic objectives and operational definitions. Okay, so each one of those strategic objectives on that first page has a very specific definition that we've adopted, and you can go through them on your own leisure, um, and see what those are, just so we're all on the same page. When we, when we say, what does cultivate whole child development mean, we've defined that, so there's a common definition and common language. This will cover in our meetings, when you come to central office, we'll go through this all together, so I don't want to overwhelm you tonight, uh, trying to bridge the new board members and the returning board members.
Under the other communication systems, um, there might need to be some amendments to number two.
Budget process.
Only because the language there might not reflect.
Yeah.
Oh, we're doing that.
Yeah, yep. Yeah, some of those tasks, that's a good point, right?
Even the date.
Yeah.
And I think our communications committee will work with. Um, so on, uh, let's see, the newsletter.
Yeah, so that was something we were looking to highlight, uh, policies.
Yep.
Um, and then Annie, um, you know, why do we teach science through an inquiry approach? You know, some professional literature articles about that, I just made that up right now, but that could be the first one, I don't know, yes. Um, but we looked at a balance of, um, highlighting a policy, so maybe the calendar policies, if people want to highlight it, December, for example. And then maybe some literature, um, that we would use to support a certain instructional approach that we use at any level of the system, so.
Spotlights on your board members?
Oh, yeah. I think they declined that.
Any other questions? Hi.
In the interest of time, I'm gonna move on to the program of studies. Uh, so the program of studies is, uh, a board-adopted action item each year. It's our high school program. Obviously, some of the curriculum and student development committee members know that we have looked at this on a slightly different lens with the graduation requirement, uh, changes, and Tom and Emily were there last week for part of that presentation, so that's forthcoming. But Mr. Saitteri, each year comes with, uh, any changes to the program of studies for recommendations to the board. This year is rather light, uh, and usually it involves the curriculum adoptions that we've made. There really weren't any major significant curriculum adoptions, so this should be, um, a rather quick presentation. Though there are a lot of slides, I don't want anybody to be, uh, concerned, but, um, and this, I believe it with the board packet, the slideshow went correct, you have that one right there, Eric? Yes, okay, yes. So we'll go through, uh, I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Saitteri to go through the presentation, and then we'll have time for questions. Do you want questions along the way or at the end?
Whatever works for everyone's.
Okay, so feel free to interrupt along the way if you prefer.
Yeah, do you have a clicker? I have a clicker.
Yep.
Bring your own, Claire.
Yeah, he's got that, he's a camera and his cell phone.
Four dollars on Amazon.
It's barely not our head tech. That's what my kids would say.
All right, so, like Mr. Skry said, this is a shorter presentation, just because there's not as much work in, going on in curriculum, only the art department is actually involved in the curriculum process. Just before I get into this, and I'll go quickly, but I won't rush, so feel free to stop me and ask any questions. I want to thank Gail, you know, for all the work and support with the curriculum work, it, it's a task that I would never want to be responsible for. She takes it on every year, and we certainly appreciate the efforts and the outcome. Melanie Witcher, who was our math coordinator last year, we recently hired as our new assistant principal, you know, she didn't really know for sure that the program of studies became hers when, you know, she was hired, so she did a tremendous job working very closely with not only Gail, but with all the coordinators, who get any of the recommendations to this level, so you can consider them and then hopefully approve them. And again, we, we do this, if you're new to the board, welcome, but we do this so early in the school year, because we have to send out our program of studies to print in December, and our students, everyone except the senior, actually get them in January and select their courses for next year by the first week in February. So the scheduling process is, in my opinion, always happening, but it, it's a rather timely process. So we appreciate your time this evening, and again, for the people I mentioned, thank you very much. So it's amazing, it's the 2021 Program of Studies. And the presentation setup, as usual, if there's any changes that are worth noting, we just will show them to you, and then if you have questions, just for example, page three of our program of studies, there's been some confusion at times when students are interested in dropping a course, some confusion at times when students are interested in dropping a course, or if a parent wants their son or daughter to drop a course. So we clarified the language just a little bit to really make it easier for someone to open up our Program of Studies and see what the timeline is, because credits are based on seat time still, but also that there is flexibility. So for example, if you read up here, it says dropping a course results in a level change. For example, changing from a Level 2, let's say, or an Algebra 2, Level 2 in the course, for whatever reason, is you're interested in dropping to Level 3. If the timeline for dropping a course is passed, we will still allow a student to make move, because that content is so consistent and so related, to say you missed the deadline would be unfair to a student and just drop math. So we clarified the language. What we did also add is that it doesn't necessarily apply to AP courses. AP courses are not our curriculum, you know, it's College Board. So dropping, you know, an AP history class, you can't necessarily just jump into one of our history classes and have it be a seamless fit. So we wanted to clarify this for our students, because guidance has noticed over the years, some questions that students have had, so we just added it to page three. And it's also on the form that's in the Program of Studies on page 95. This is a big book. Page 95, so when someone fills out the appeal for a change in schedule, they can see that information, you know. And ultimately, if a student's request is outside of our guidelines, you know, we always have the discretion where counselor will come and meet with me, and if it's ultimately good for kids and something we can do for all students, we would do it. But it's a process that, you know, a lot of changes do occur in the scheduling process, because we ask students to select what they want to take next year in February, you know. So a lot of things changed between that January time and the start of the school year. So again, this was just a clarifier. The departments that have no changes at all, so we're not going to talk about any of these, there's, you know, and the reason is, you know, for almost all of them, the curriculum has been done, or it's on deck. So if you see, like, science, for example, there's no changes. They went through an incredible process the last two years. So we're not going to talk about these. There's no changes in our Program of Studies. There are changes in the art department. Those are the most significant changes as they should be because of their work on curriculum. CTE had a few minor changes around wording. English had some changes that we discussed last year that I'll review. It's really the next phase. And mathematics and world language had some things, some things around actual readability, not any changes in the courses, but they read the course descriptions and maybe added an and or an or, because it didn't read really smoothly. And we'll go over some of those, just so you have an idea. For the art courses, the actual course description that's in your packet, like, we're not going to go over every single new art course, because it certainly wouldn't be a brief presentation then. But you have all that information, you know, it's after the thank you slide, it's only a few in, and then all of the new courses that will come to you for approval by the end of the year in the art department. You know, those are already in the actual Program of Studies that we're planning and in this presentation, in case you want to review those a little more thoroughly. Again, we won't go over those this evening.
Have a question.
Yes.
What's Prince for Peace?
Prince for Peace is...
Your art course. It's one of the new courses offered.
All right, you're a little ahead of me, so.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry, sorry. I thought we talked about removing an.
So, these are courses that it's very common when a department works on curriculum, they look at courses and remove particular courses. It's not necessarily that these courses are no longer in existence. Their titles have changed, their course descriptions have changed to become more relevant. So when you see all of these courses have been removed, these are new courses. So, you know, if we go back one, you can see these are titles that have been removed, course descriptions have been revised, these are what the new courses are actually titled. And Prince for Peace, if you turn to, if you wanted...
Page 15, got it, thank you.
What's that?
Page 15, got it, thank you.
You can see, if you look at page 30, if you, I'm not sure how yours is labeled, it's probably 50, because you have two. The actual course description for that Prince for Peace course is listed. And, you know, the art department has talked with students, you know, there's a lot of communication to see what types of courses would be of high interest, because the art department, you know, students only need one credit to graduate. We're hoping that students take many more of the courses, so these are the departments that pay really close attention to their offerings. You know, for English, you know, every year, our students taking an English course, even if they don't want to. Art, that's not the case.
Does some of these, it seems like some of these art courses might also fall under CTE. Is that true? Like, advanced 3D and animation?
There's certainly relation. The credit piece would not fall under, you know, a teacher with the certification of the content area, that's where it's awarded credit. You know, I think over time, we'll talk more about that as we get into new graduation requirements in the future. But there is certainly a cross between, you know, our art department and our CTE department share certain classrooms as well. Like, our updated Room 510, which is state of the art, you know, is a shared room with art and CTE, and everyone wants it. The 3D printers are getting more and more common, and are going to be used not only in CTE, but also in art, so there's certainly crossover.
And the people writing these courses, both short films and animation 1 and 2, they met and discussed with CTE what CTE was doing, so there's not a duplication of that. So there's a very distinct difference in the way they're developing the course, and also they angle that they're going in the course from. So it won't look like the same offer number one.
Any other questions? All right, so just as an example for some art, some of the general updates, when you see a course listed, like, you can see Painting Studio, it would have a new course description, the prerequisite change Successful Completion of Drawing, to add the new course for the prerequisite. So the, ultimately, you know, the course that had been taken previously was a different course, now we change the new course title. Example here as well, AP Art Studio, you know, Successful Completion of Drawing, Drawing Studio, and Painting Studio, those are new course titles, so those had to be updated in the prerequisite. Pretty simple changes, but we wanted to make sure you were aware of those. And again, related to the actual new course descriptions. When we look at the CTE, they had some general updates, you know, they spent a couple of years as well doing an incredible amount of work to offer some exciting courses. You know, over the time, they've revised course descriptions for the following courses that are listed, and that was work that was being done over the course of the year, and they finalized the process in June of this past year.
Lasted down.
So, you know, it's, again, really, I think they're really excited that they're finished with the curriculum writing process. I think that's fair to say. And now the implementation's going really smoothly, and the course descriptions align. You know, and we're hoping more and more students are interested in these courses. And we look at those numbers every single year. If you were on the Board of Education last year, one of the things we made, some pretty significant changes in the English department, we currently have, and just follow along with me to make sure I explain it properly, we currently have all of our 10th and 11th graders taking American Lit and American Lit Honors. After this year, the American Lit and American Lit Honors courses are being removed, and this is to prepare for the transition for next year's juniors who will be taking either World Lit or World Lit Honors. Sophomores will continue to take American Lit and American Lit Honors but Grade 10. So this was a one-year big transition, we talked about last year, that all of our sophomores and juniors had to take, so there was no gap in missing particular content. And now, next year, we'll be ready for the transition where the American Lit will stay in 10th grade, which is a flip, and all of our juniors will have a choice. And if you look here, the choice for new courses would be a Grade 11 World Lit Honors course or a Grade 11 World Literature course. And then we're adding a new AP course, an AP Language and Composition course, that I think will be very interesting and very popular with a lot of our current 10th graders, who I would, I'll be surprised if that course doesn't fill incredibly. So some new offerings, and again, this was, you know, I would say we're into phase three of where we are with English, and we should be in a really good place next year. And we didn't miss students, you know, not taking American Lit Honors, for an example. So again, this is just, we're right on track, and Yale's been working with the English department, it seems like, for a long time.
For a long time.
On curriculum work. A lot of really, really exciting changes, and I do think the kids will be excited about that as well.
And the thinking was behind this flip-flop, that students should be very well versed in American literature before they go on to study world literature, because that topic is so vast.
You know, Gail worked really closely with the English department, who are all in on this one, and, you know, have really done an incredible amount of work. They were the initial group, English and math, working on curriculum, and it seems like English hasn't stopped. You know, they've been doing, for a long time, and doing some really good work, and it's pretty impressive, and their department's doing a great job. So, math?
Is language and composition new?
AP Language and Composition are brand new courses. And we will make that very known to students, you know. Our counselors, if you're wondering, the week we hand out the Program of Studies, Eric, one of your favorite days, right? Can you get the Program of Studies? They go into all the either English or Social Studies classes to make sure, not the seniors, but all the other students, you know, have first an idea of the process, but then we talk about all the new courses that are added as well. The coordinators and administrators go to the middle school with the 8th graders and do the same thing. We have parent night as well. So most of the students, if they're paying attention, either have their parents to help or our presentation to make sure they know all of our new courses. And, you know, AP courses at hand, you know, that will pique some interest, without question. And I do think there'll be a lot of interest for that. Others right now? So, math, some general updates, you know, the, for some reason, and we're not really sure why, this, this was before my time, hasn't been, I think it was just kind of overlooked, that's never been in play over the past seven years. The math department said, why is this in there? So we just pulled it out. I mean, it hasn't been being followed, I'm not sure why it was ever in there. But if you ever really were looking and comparing Program of Studies, that will be gone next year. It's not necessary. Also, in our Program of Studies, at the end of each of the departments, there is a flow chart. Sometimes it doesn't look like a flow chart, but there is a flow to it, where it shows when you're in 9th grade, these are the math courses that are available, and these are the options of courses you can take. It, it does confirm that you're not tracked. You know, if you're in a Level 2, you can move up to an honors class, you can go down to a Level 3, you can jump into an AP. If you take a look when we print the actual Program of Studies, there's arrows pointing in just about every direction, but it helps for a student. Again, I had a student graduate, my own kid, and I have a daughter in high school. I look at the chart myself, just to make sure she's, you know, in the right progression. It also helps plan, you know, the next couple of years if they're not seniors. So we just tried to make that, make those arrows a little clearer. I'm not sure if they're clearer, but I know there's more arrows. That's for sure, because there's certainly a lot of options. In world languages, something very simple, you know, the departments that, a Spanish 6 Cinema and Conversation course, they're just calling it Spanish Cinema and Conversation. I, I think the 6 didn't fit for them and didn't seem to fit well for kids. It's a pretty popular course, and they thought that title would make more sense. So, you know, just simple removal of the 6.
Does, are the, did the prerequisites change that?
No, no prerequisite change, just the course title change. Sometimes, our course titles are really exciting, but they don't fit on a transcript. So removing a 6 makes it a little more readable. Colleges don't reach out and say, what, what does this mean? They just make some assumptions. We'd rather not have them assume. You know, it's a high-level course, you know, this is the highest level in the high school, and we have a lot of students take one of the two options at this level. And again, they just wanted to look at a number change, but no other change in that particular area. The world language additional updates, these were the ones that I've referenced in the beginning. These were revised descriptions, so they were a little more readable for students. You know, it was a little clunky, so they added an and or an or. Or they also added, students who successfully complete this course will be prepared for, and they listed the next course, because there's so many choices. Our Program of Studies, you know, I've been in seven years now, I'm still impressed when I look through it. There's so many choices. We're helping students, because they actually read this book. This is one of the only publications that we continue to print copies for all students, because it's, I think, a really important one to be able to touch and go back and forth. Electronically, it would be difficult. But they didn't change any of the course descriptions, like the content, again, just the readability and helping students with, if they completed Spanish for honors, it will say now they're prepared for, you know, the next course in the actual Program of Studies, or they can turn to the flow chart, you know, look at where all the different arrows go. So those changes were pretty, pretty easy to say yes to at my level, and it just made the reading a little bit easier, which I thought was really appropriate. Another change that the flow chart had to be updated to include Poulsen, because we've referenced the world language offerings at the middle school. Middle school now is 6th grade as well, so we made sure that was reflected. So if a parent opens up our Program of Studies, and they looked at where their son or daughter was taking classes in middle school, to see where they're going. You know, some of our students will take Spanish and go all the way through Spanish 6. Some have had enough, and they'll jump in Mandarin or Latin. You know, we have more than a handful of kids who take two different languages. Some take a couple of years of one and jump into another. It's really popular, and I would say the curriculum work has made the interest in those courses really seem to go up. And it's really positive to see the number of kids. So again, that particular change was truly just because Poulsen now has one other grade level in there, so it references grades 6, 7, and 8th grade. So as promised, the very brief amount of changes. The, I think the art department, there's, again, some really exciting changes. Anything that is being changed with course descriptions, we even put the world language ones in here. Again, if you want to find the and or an or, feel free. But the, the art department ones are pretty exciting, you know, and the fact that we're getting through this pretty extensive curriculum writing process, you know, for K-12 and the whole district is pretty exciting. But, you know, I'll happily answer any questions. Melanie is really excited to answer questions, because this is hers. And again, we always appreciate your support. You know, the Program of Studies is a big step for us to have completed, because again, we start that scheduling process very early on, and we hope to have a framework of what we're offering in early March of every single year.
Any questions? If you want to go back to high school.
I know, right?
Feel free.
The decline enrollment is sections that changes, but being able to fit, I mean, that's such a big Program of Studies.
Our approach, and I'm not sure it's every high school's approach, we don't predetermine what we're offering. We let the student requests drive that. So far, all of our programs have been running. You know, this is probably, the last year, we're above 1,000 students. I think we have 1,013 right now. Right now, the prediction next year is not 1,000. I think at some points, you know, what, what we'll do especially is, like, when we have small 8th grade classes, we push, like, world language, go and present. Like, our Latin teacher, really dynamic, impressive teacher, you know, he's worried about enrollment. He said, call the principal up in Poulsen and go talk to the 8th graders. We had too many kids sign up for Latin. So we have to do that more, and we're really working on, even our presentation, when we had 330 kids in every class, we could be boring and the classes would all fill. Now, CTE does a cool video, they bring a robot over, you know, and... Technology's doing quite well. You know, if you came to the VEX competition the other day, it was awesome. But we're making it a little higher interest, so students can see all of the offerings. What we're also doing, which has proven to be pretty effective, you know, seniors have great plans when they're juniors, and take every single course we offer, and then they get their schedule on day one, and they want to drop everything.
Rerew.
Especially Period 1 and 6, so they could come in late, leave early.
I think I have one of those.
Yeah. I, I, you know, they work hard for three years, like, if they could leave early and come in late, I'm okay with that. But what we have done is, when two or three days pass every tri, start of each trimester, we have the coordinators go into the study halls and say to students, these are current courses that have seats right now, and there's, if you want to take this cool clay class, go see your counselor, there's a seat, you can sign up. Because some of our students don't really benefit from, you know, 60-minute study halls, you know, and they'd rather take a course that is really interesting to them. And some of our courses don't have a really heavy workload outside of the actual class time, so they're really good for some students, you know, mental well-being as well. So our, especially CTE, art, music, they jump in the study halls and say, hey, by the way, we have seats available. And in our foods classes, like seniors, you know, those lists are through the roof. But again, you know, when they have their credits, when they're accepted to college, they do drop. So we really push to fill those sections.
That's great.
And there's some policy and guidelines around class sizes for running courses as well.
Yes.
So, we run that report every, every trimester, every year.
Yeah, after the school year starts, we don't run the report again because the changes, you know, at that point, it's too late. But early on, we don't run any first level courses without at least 10 students. You know, some of the higher, most advanced courses like that AP art course, sometimes there's only six. But those six kids are usually going to college. To major in that, we would never consider cutting that class. And, you know, sometimes we have to get creative. Mr. Bodnar, we call him the wizard. That's a feature in infinite campus that's called the wizard. Where he, it looks like a really extensive Excel sheet. He could move different courses around with literally the kids who requested the courses and see, like, let's say 50 kids requested one course, but only three kids get the course. That's because we didn't put it in the right place. He could just move it somewhere and it will show every single impact it has on kids to fill a course, but what else it will do to another course? He spends, you know, hours, he tells us all the time, lots of hours, you know, lots and lots of hours to get the highest fill rate. He, he averages about 96 or 7% of student request fill rate, which is unbelievable. Most schools would stop at 90. He really tries to get our kids in the classes. And the coordinators deserve a lot of credit because we'll call them down. We give them a lot of freedom. Tell us where you want your classes. And sometimes where they want doesn't work. And we'll say, well, you have a couple of options. You know, we either are going to reduce teachers because your courses are filled or this is where it will work. Can you make it happen? And they are tremendous with that. And, you know, we spend a, a great deal of time, you know, and we're hoping all of the courses fill and so far, they have been.
That's great. Any other questions?
Great job and congratulations again.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you again. And I apologize for being late. We appreciate your support.
Absolutely, Eric. Thank you.
Eric, you are excused for the evening, my friend.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. We have a test tomorrow.
Oh, yeah.
Who's your test going tomorrow?
I have it in algebra two with Ms. Londo.
Awesome. It'll be great.
Yes, you will. Thank you for sharing him.
Thank you very much.
Other matters? Oh, no, no. Sorry, set up point six.
Yeah, we have one request. Greg requested the timing and state testing individual student reports to come out in ELU. Has some information for the board on that?
Thanks very much. Congratulations again, Ms. Solitary.
Have a good night, everyone.
You too. Nice to see you, Ms. Witcher.
Yeah, what I've done is just provide you with some dates and an overview of the timing of the Smarter Balanced Assessment Reports, when they've been released historically. And just as an overview, the Smarter Balanced is administered in the spring of the preceding year. So, it's the preceding school year that those tests are administered. The, last year, they happened as early as the first week in March for our fifth and sixth graders and went till, I think our last batch tested at the end of April. That would be our fourth, third and fourth graders. So, typically, what we've been doing is mailing home the standardized testing in October typically or November. And they're sent home after the board receives various reports. We try to hit one mailing with all student reports to save on the cost of the mailings themselves. Last year, we mailed them out November 8th. This year, we were waiting for the science assessment reports. They came into the district on October 17th. And we stuffed envelopes and they were sent home together about 10 days earlier on October 26th. And I've included for you a sample of, or the parent letter that went home and also a sample score report so you could see what they look like. So, I hope that gives you some information.
So, I raised this item because I wanted to discuss it. My concern about this, and I wanted to raise it at the board level because it's regarding communications, a general office communications committee with parents, which I know is, is connected to our board adopted expectations and goals for the year, is that my understanding is that, science assessment aside, ELA and math come out to districts in the first half of September. And that we received, the parents received those reports, which come printed from the state about six weeks after that receipt, at least six weeks after, depending on where we were in the order of mailing. And I think for me, my expectation would be that even if it's an additional cost, if there are some students who are getting the science mailing later, that that mailing go out to parents as soon as possible. I recognize that we want the board to see that information, but I don't think that the board presentation of information should preclude parents from getting that individual information as soon as possible. I think it's probably more of the norm for that to go out to parents, I think, in September. Especially of concern is that this means that, this schedule means that parents don't have that information for their parent meetings. So, or, or most of them. You know, there are obviously some that probably happened after the late October mailing went out. So, armed with that information, they can have better meetings with their teachers. Whether or not it's relevant to that individual student can be a, a choice that that parent then makes at that moment. But also just in general, making sure that parents have that information as soon as possible is really important to me.
Just historically, we haven't and, you know, it's the norm here. Maybe not the norm, I'm not sure what the norm is, but the norm here has always been after the board presentation. So, duly noted.
How do we adopt that change or what? Where do we go on that?
We heard your request.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I, I have to say, I agree with the, the corresponding with the, because I know as a parent, I get this and it, it seems like great to me. So, if we could coordinate it to be with conference time to have, you know, professionals be able to walk parents through it, all the better.
Is this science, the CMP test?
It's not CMP anymore. It's Next Generation Science Testing, yeah. But it was the first time those results came out. It's the next gen science standards, yeah.
And who's who's science now will bring?
Five.
Five and eight.
Eight, ten, eleven.
Eleven. So, subset of everybody.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Okay, so moving onward, Dr. Vitalia was published and I have a copy of the article.
Published with her mom, right?
Yes, with her mom. How many people can publish with their parents? So cool. Yeah, I'm going to pass these out here. I mentioned last time, we did get a copy of the article, commissioning the copy. So, she did a, Kathy Brooks was a program coordinator for science for years here, Liz's mom. And she and Liz put together an article here on co-teaching and teacher collaborations and spent some time researching and working on it. So, she's very proud. She does not know I'm handing these out tonight, so I can embarrass her, but we're very proud of Liz.
Very exciting. Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah. Two other quick, other matters very quickly. We have a pretty big football game on Friday night and not that's a board matter, but managing the crowd is. And we had some issues that we made very directly to the public that we had to address after the first game. And the following games after that, because of the incredible partnership with the police department and the town, without incident, without event. So, we'll continue that. For the Shelton game coming up this Friday, I just wanted the board to know that we all, we did reach out to the first selectman superintendent of the administration in Shelton. They are sending their administrators. They are sending an SRO from their high school as well. We've had great communication with the town to make sure that it is a positive experience for everyone involved, that includes spectators and athletes.
It's an away game this Friday? Oh, it's home? Okay.
We're hosting, that's why.
Gotcha. So, they're sending their people to.
We reach out, so they would send as well, so we can work in tandem. So, yeah. So, a special thank you to the police department, to the town for that support and also to the Shelton administration and first selectmen for their partnership. They were very receptive. We reached out to them, so.
Do we send our folks as well to games as requested?
We obviously would. Our administrators go to a lot of the away games anyways, but this is the first time that we've had the partnership with the SROs as well. But it's a, it's a great thing because when things happen with students, they're your own students and we like to handle it that way. So, it works out better.
Tell them how many SROs would go to the games?
Well.
We have, we have two, right?
Yes, so Mr. Semple, our athletic director, did an incredible job with working with the police where we have four officers assigned to the game already, officers. We have requested additional two to four, depending on availability. And we kind of compare it to Fourth of July presentation, our presence, okay, at the surf club. And when you have as many people as came to that first game and the problems, quite frankly, we're not going to hide from it. The problems that we did have, and I'll repeat this, among the gulps, that was the problems. We needed to have people beyond the administration and one SRO to deal with that. So, in, in 48 hours, chief drum, athletic director, Mr. Semple, the first select with the time, Mr. Vanish, Mr. Erskine in the beach director department, we all came together, Ms. Solitary, myself, came up with a plan and we have had no issue since then. So, our SROs are, also provide support. Having the Shelton SRO come though is a new measure. And it's, at the time we planned this, Shelton was undefeated, we were undefeated. We expected to be some big pinnacle game. They've lost twice since then, I've been told, but it still will be a, a big game for us. So, we just want everyone to be safe.
Do they open the back exit area for?
So, that was our appeal because the one way in, one way out is highly problematic and, you know, road rage tends to form on Surf Club Road. So, they did have an avenue to go out back that was presented, not everyone took advantage of it. People that were parked deep in the parking lot for the first game, that was not open and that's where a lot of our problems were.
Right. Yes, well, they, there's an exit past the boat launch area, yeah, that they opened for Fourth of July. But they had not opened on that first opening gate.
We changed that for the bigger football games, yeah. Yeah. My last one is I am just honored because I have such a great relationship with Rabbi Offner at Temple of Beth Tikva. She asked me to come and speak this Friday at Shabbat service and I can't wait. We're going to talk about the iGen. We're going to talk about raising this generation of kids and the work that we do around antisemitism and Holocaust education in Madison Public Schools. This community is very fortunate to have Rabbi Offner. She is just remarkable and I'm very lucky to consider her a friend right now. So, I'm looking forward to that Friday night.
What time?
Seven o'clock. I think it starts, yeah. Yes.
Good luck.
That's it. That was a lot tonight. Thank you for your endurance. And Diane and Kathy's not always like this.
That was a good one. Important thanks to you. Board member comments? So, we'll go to committee reports, curriculum and student development. Emily and Gail.
Gail's going to start this off with, we had a very special, it was a special meeting.
Yeah. It was. It was considered actually a special meeting. So, about, about a year ago, a year plus ago, I had the opportunity to hear Karen Hess present at a state conference that was called Performance Matters. It really goes over indicators of performance. Karen Hess is a national, international expert on levels of thinking. And she had published a book called The Assessment Toolkit, which is about this thick and it has become my bible. Karen Hess also was one of the co-designers on the Smarter Balanced Assessment. She did the ELA part and she's an expert in depth of knowledge, but also in how to universally design assessments for accessibility for all kids. So, I sent Karen, following that conference, a copy of my Smarter Balance Report that I gave to the board last year and I asked her to look it over and critique it. And we also met to go over our assessment design here in Madison. And we did that for several hours, at which point I decided that we needed her in district. We really wanted her to take a look at, a close look at our complexity and our tasks and our content complexity. So, she worked with a group of coordinators, pretty much my whole curriculum council for two days. And the board curriculum committee came and met her on the second day and saw our workshop in action. And I think Emily's going to hand out of what we, what we did. So, we're very lucky to have her. She's also an expert in competency-based assessments and she's coming out with a new book in January. So, she's very well versed in competency-based certification.
And tell Kathy, say, this is my stuff now. She brightened right up.
So, we will have Karen come back and work with us in March as well for another two days. But she, she actually gave us quite a bit of tools attached to the outcomes for the workshop. You'll see one of the tools that we worked off of as the committee came and observed our, our workouts. And I think this board has been aware that we do an interdisciplinary assessment in grade two, grade four, grade six. And we're designing one for grade eight, but also they have samples of those for the mastery-based diploma assessments that look very similar. So, we unpacked the sample from the state department as well. We use this criteria to unpack it.
Gail, do you think board members will be invited when she comes back this time?
I, I love having board members.
I was sad I couldn't make it.
Yeah.
Yes, I do want you to. You're invited to everything.
We always survey our PD afterwards to see, you know, what everybody thought of it and it was very well received. So, we gave teachers the option at the end whether they wanted to break off into disciplines for March or stay all together and do another deep dive into rubrics and how we assess. And they wanted to stay together, so we're together for two days in March. I think that speaks for the quality of the workshop and the work.
It was really neat to see. It was, it was very helpful to have time with Karen together. And Tom was there too and Tom, you know, hyped up and would like to. But to go in and sort of observe them, the curriculum folks working together and the excitement and also to have the, the different disciplines and grades together. I think people get to hear stuff that they're not often hearing from what's happening in the second grade and high school. There was a really exciting energy and I think we talked a lot about the work and our mission and our vision and I felt like we were really seeing it in action at that, at that meeting. It was pretty, pretty cool.
That's powerful.
Yeah. It was great.
I was happy to be there. She was, she was very impressive. I thought she filled, filled questions from a lot of different areas really well. Was a really good person to secure for the district. And I thought the teachers were really engaged in the workshop too. It was, it was nice to let them have us be in there. It was part of the fishbowl, but it was, it seemed like a very good workshop for them, so.
They're following up with some of their tools in their grade levels or in their coursework. So, we call them professional learning communities and they'll be using some of the tools that they became familiar with over the two days. So, everybody made the promise and the commitment of what they were going to do between now and March. So, we'll continue to grow the work.
Any other questions? End of report? You know, you always wanted to say. Okay, communications.
No report.
Facilities committee? No report. Finance committee?
No report.
Personnel?
No report.
Policy committee?
Buckle up.
Report away.
So, we had a lively meeting tonight where we discussed policy 3542.4 lunch charging. We voted to move that forward to the board with some amendments. So, you'll be seeing that on December 3rd. We had some discussion about how to level and flush certain aspects of that policy, setting a $20 threshold. We'll be able to read the full script once it comes out. Policy 5120.9 was also discussed tonight regarding homeless students. The Slay amendment to that as presented and it was also passed unanimously and will be brought, brought to the board on December 3rd as well. We spent a lot of time talking about the 2020-21 school calendar. A lot of thoughts about how to address that. There are some unusual ways that holidays fall this year, just to give you a preview of that, but I would encourage you all to take a look at that. We're adding a policy meeting on December 3rd. So, if you have interest in a deep dive into the calendar discussion for the year, please
into the calendar discussion for the year, uh, please save the date for December 3rd, where we are going to be discussing that further before we move to the board. We recognize that it's a little late to be moving to the board, but we are adding the meeting, so the board can review on the December, uh, by December 17th at the latest. We are also in our very early days, uh, thanks to shipment and Goodwin and a lot of help from Wendy, um, to review policies, uh, 000 through, zero through 3999, so a massive chunk of the policy handbook. I was expecting that we would get back, uh, some notes about some adjustments that we might want to make. We got notes back from shipment and Goodwin about every single one of those policies, about changes that we might want to make, or their stock policy that might, we might want to adopt, or things that we want to drop from the policies because they are redundant or aligned with state law and aren't necessary, or, or, or other things like that. So, uh, we are going to be starting that process, uh, and biting chunks of it throughout the year probably, because there'll be a lot to review. So you will probably expect to see a number of policies come through here that, um, probably won't affect practice very much, but will change the, the policy handbook considerably. So expect, expect to see the beginning of that. As a reminder, this is, um, year one of a six-year process that we adopted as a policy committee to review the entire handbook every six years, so we would make sure that we no longer had items in the handbook that said, for example, um, or the manual, um, you know, last reviewed in 1992, as we do now, uh, things that have just never been looked at again. So this will be a regular cycle, hopefully not as massive of a change every six years, but, um, certainly worth the, the time, and, uh, Wendy, your help on that is greatly appreciated. You also have before you tonight, four policies that are up for third reading, uh, all listed on your agenda, so I won't go through them all, even the hotbed topic of sunscreen application in school. We have received no comments on any of those topic, uh, any of those policies since the last meeting, as admit, Tom, anything I've left?
You got it all?
All right?
Great, just a quick clarification, when you said that you're going to take it in chunks and review the process, you talked about looking at shipment and Goodwin's recommendations?
Yeah, we have their recommendations in full. We're gonna.
Do you anticipate, do you need to bring somebody in to work with, or you just kind of read through and see if, if you've got any questions to follow up with them?
Exactly that, yeah. We, well, quite a bit of it is, is simply dropping policies that are obsolete, or could be combined into one thing, or our stock policies that they've got, um, so it's going to be a lot of that work.
Just go along, though.
And we'll check in where we want to adjust or ask questions.
Couple of things that are important, shipment, and number one, streamlining policies, not putting more language in need, and number two, not having policies that are not necessarily mandated. A lot of boards will accumulate policies over time and have set thresholds to follow those policies, but they don't have to do that statutorily, and it could be by design or it could be legacy. And in a lot of cases, it's more legacy.
Let me jump in as well and just point out one more thing about my report beforehand that, um, for new board members, if you haven't read the entire policy manual yet, um, the, you, you're.
She still took the office word.
I find it fun to read her on lecture night. Um, the, uh, the, uh, third reading is, is when we vote on, on something. So according to the policy, um, about policies, we move things out of the policy committee, they go for a first reading, uh, where we just look at it, and they go to the next board meeting for a second reading, we look at it, goes to the third board meeting, and we look at it again and vote. So this is the voting time for these four policies. So that's something that I did not understand before I was on the board, so, there you go, third reading.
You get time to digest.
End of report.
Thank you. Lauren Leiza.
No, report.
Um, audience response to information presented? Um, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the minutes for the October 29th Board of Education meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Um, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
There are two abstentions. Three.
Three, sorry. So can we do it? We're still good, right?
Yes.
Yep, okay. I need a motion to approve the 2021 program of studies.
So moved.
Second.
Um, discussion? I love it.
That's great.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained? Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve, um, the 2021 budget calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We were all a little bit.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve policy 5120.3.4, Management Plan and Guidelines for Students with Food Allergies, Glycogen, Storage Disease, and/or Diabetes.
So moved.
Thank you.
Wait, was that a question?
Second, oh, doesn't need a second, it came out of committee, um, all, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Uh, we have two abstentions, right?
Hasn't been announced yet either.
No, but it's third reading, so you can still vote. Um, a motion to approve policy 5144.4, Physical Activity Under directed Play and Student Discipline.
So moved.
Thank you, Emily. Um, doesn't need a second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve policy 6146, Graduation Requirements.
So moved.
Um, doesn't need a second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve sunscreen application in school policy. Greg, come on, you want to?
So moved.
Move it, move it.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? I did not ask for discussion on that, on purpose. Full business.